Good evening and welcome to the November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the Milton School Committee coming to you tonight from, for the first time, from the Milton Access TV Studio Room Two Forty-Five at the Milton, Milton High School. Before we begin, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, sorry. All right, so, moving on, first item is the, is the agenda for this evening. I have two items that I'd like to, like to add. One is under, number nine, we have subpart A, this is on the school committee meeting location. I would add just a, subpart B, discussion and vote, as well, if there's no objection. And then, under executive session, under subpart A where it says negotiation strategy with M-E-A, I would add AFSMEA as well, if there's no objection. So, unless there's any objection, we'll approve the, the agenda for this evening. Seeing none, the agenda's approved. Next item is citizen speak. Maureen, do we have anyone for citizen speak? No one for citizen speak? Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Ms. Gormly.
Thank you Chairman Zulus. The chairman had asked me to give a brief overview of PACC. The school committee and the viewing audience, I'm sure, have been following the publicity around the PACC testing. So, a brief overview, and then any questions you might have. You should also know that DESI keeps us informed daily, probably every other week, there's a webinar keeping us informed. So, they have done an outstanding job. So, to frame this, MCAS began in nineteen ninety-three. And when MCAS statewide testing began, it was in grades four, eight, and ten, again, a graduation requirement, English and math. And look what we've come to. Grades three through eight, English, math, science, three, five, eight, graduation requirement, English and math at grade ten, and science also at grade nine and ten. And so, last year, for the last two years, discussions, the discussion around PACC testing, we really prepared over two years with the infrastructure. In statewide meetings we attend, the issue of infrastructure is, is really holding a lot of districts back. I went to a conference, we went to a conference last week with Becky Padera, MAS-C, MAS-S Conference, and the associate commissioner said to the audience of school committee members and superintendents, if you're not ready with the technology, you have a bigger problem than state assessment. And you should go out and you should access E-Rate. And so, I think the Milton School Committee, the town government, the capital committee, and really, over the last two years, we had the infrastructure in place, and we had the technology in place to take the PACC exam. And so, on behalf of your children and the children of Milton, the end game is that all of these tests will be given on technology. And so, last year, we committed to grades three through eight, English and math on PACC. Keep in mind, science remained only an MCAS option, three, five, eight, and nine or ten. And for the graduation requirement, remained at the high school, MCAS at grade ten, English and math. And so, you saw on the press, all of the debate. So, commissioner recommended a hybrid. And so, what they voted, the Board of Education, exactly, was a transition to a next-generation MCAS test that will be given for the first time in the spring of two thousand seventeen, and use both MCAS and PACC items, as well as items developed specifically for the Massachusetts test. So, there was a lot of suspense, I have to tell you, among superintendents. I don't know if you saw, Chairman Zulus sent me the Globe editorial endorsing PACC right up until the morning before the decision. And, so now, what will happen going ahead for Milton public schoolchildren? We will take the MCAS this year. We took the MCAS last year. We will stay with the program of, the MCAS, we'll take PACC, did I say?
Use MCAS, yeah.
We'll take PACC. MCAS will be science, grade five, eight, and nine or ten, and to graduate still MCAS. You should also know that fifty-four percent of the schools in the district last year took PACC, forty-six taking MCAS. And, there's one note that Ms. Vivu, our data specialist, spends time with us every single day. One fascinating aspect of all of this is, during December, parents will be getting the PACC results. And we've gotten some data that's embargoed, and calls are going in, questioning scores, right down to the name of the different students. But, when we get our PACC results, it's really interesting, some students in the state took PACC, paper and pencil. So, we're being compared, when you get PACC scores, it's PACC on technology and PACC pencil and paper grouped together. And I look at Mr. Walker, and I remember the work that he did with then our math coordinator, Ms. Walsh Miller, and getting documentation from the state that the scores would be calibrated. You know, they're leading into, can they be calibrated, what's the calibration going to look like? But again, if you keep in mind, we'd really, until a year ago, we would get our MCAS results during August, so we could use them for grouping and planning. So, they're trying to do as much work as they can, but it remains to be seen what kind of calibration they're going to do, and what kind of comparisons that they're going to be able to make. So, as a result of the vote, they're committed to a computer-based state assessment with the goal of implementing it statewide in two thousand nineteen. Remain, they're going, we're going to remain Massachusetts member of the PACC consortium, and they're going to convene groups of teachers, higher education faculty, to look at all aspects of the testing, from students with disabilities, English language learners. And, one very important part of, I think, the PACC testing last year was the amount of testing. If, if I had one issue with the whole testing schedule, there was a tremendous amount of testing. So, really, they had perfected the MCAS into a concise amount of time, but anyone who's involved in the schools, I know Ms. Verella had to almost work at the PS planning activities around PACC testing. So, they're going, they're committed, and they've listened to superintendents and educators, and they're committed to setting up teams to work on that this year. You, you'll see in the paper that anyone who took PACC is, will be held harmless. So, as you remember, there are levels, levels one, two, and three. So, what they've promised is that if you're involved in the PACC testing, you won't go backwards. But, again, from your data, you are going to be able to, if it's comparing to the state level, comparing to the other districts who took PACC, we're going to have good indications of where we are. And that data will be out at the beginning of December. Districts administering the new test in grades three through eight in the spring of two thousand seventeen, again, will remain to be held harmless. They will, this afternoon, just an hour ago, they're beginning to send us correspondences, so superintendents have to commit now, because all these tests have to be ordered, who's taking PACC, who's taking PACC, computer or pencil and paper, who's taking MCAS, which grades, so there's a tremendous amount of work to do. But, in December, we'll have further results. One other important note, when this, the parent, data comes in to send out to parents, I will take a short part of one of your meetings, so that we can go over what the results will look like, how they'll correspond and communicate to parents, we'll communicate with our teachers, because parents will be communicating with teachers, asking them for, to explain the data, because very different for PACC from MCAS, is that PACC, level one, student did not yet meet expectations, level two, partially met expectations, three, approached expectations, four, met expectations, five, exceeded expectations. So, that's an added level of results for every student on the test. So, we're waiting, we have embargoed results now, as soon as they're open in public, I'll share them with you offline, and then at your next meeting, and we'll share the parent data sheets, so that parents will be able to watch your school committee and know what to expect. So, any questions or promises?
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Yes. Oh, you go first. Okay. Mary, just a couple of questions. You had said something like, they promised we won't go back?
Backwards. So, we're-
Backwards, what do you mean by that?
You know how students, schools are level one, level two, level three? Well, if you took PACC, and your results would make you a level, if you were a level one, and your results would make you a level two school, they're holding you harmless. You're not going to be classified as a level two district.
Because they're being nice, or because the results line up, so that it-
Because they're doing, great question, because they're doing the work calibrating. So, they're holding districts who are in PACC harmless. So, I want to tell you those, a nice indication, not sharing any results, if a school goes ahead, they let you go ahead.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, we will.
So, indications are that might happen.
And then, just two really quick quest, one quick question-
Did I make myself clear?
Yes, you did. You did. So, you're going to put something, you're going to do something at our, one of our next meetings, but, in the meantime, could you put a very brief report, a sort of roadmap of what's coming, because I think sometimes if parents hear it a couple of times, it's helpful?
Absolutely.
And then they'll know too, they can watch the meeting if they want, but just getting the language and the vocabulary out there.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
We did, and Ms. Bagley-Jones, you're right, we put something in the email blast, but it's text-heavy, so we'll do maybe, you know, the top ten questions that parents might have about PACC and MCAS testing.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Verella?
So, I have a couple of questions too, that I wanted to ask. So, the new, the, the hybrid test that they now want to move forward with, just for confirmation, so they, they feel that we'll be ready to take in, in the spring, next, not, not the spring of two thousand sixteen, but the spring of two thousand seventeen? And, and it would all be electronic or half and half, some, some print, some electronic?
Well, that's a great question.
Yeah.
I haven't read the answer, have my-
I don't, I don't think it's all electronic in seventeen, just districts won't be ready.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
And so, my other question was, if, if, I mean, I, I've been reading the stuff that you send from, the info you get, but I, I was wondering also at the conference, I know that when the NGA put together the National Common Core Standards, and every DOE that signed on with it, it's not, it's not publicized, but you get more funding. And so, like, so the federal level, you'll get more, well, you know, every state gets more funding. So, I'm wondering if that's, if there was any talk about that, or they queried anything about, with the, the head of education of Massachusetts, that because we won't be a part of that, or do you formally leave it when you don't sign on to be part of the NGA? And will we, is there the potential that we'll get less funding by not being a part of it? Any, any word of that, or speaking of that?
Well, I'm going to find out the exact answer for you, but I think that your question is why, in every one of the responses, Massachusetts will remain a member of the PACC consortium.
So, you can be a member of it, because, because the, the assessment that will be given will be a hybrid, a part of it, and then part of, but, but my other, was, I, I was of the understanding though, that if you adopt the National Common Core Standards, as part of your, that will now, what you follow is your state standards, you could only, you could only add up to fifteen percent of what your state standards, you know, were or used to be, or whatever. And they would always have to be differentiated from what the National Common, it couldn't be abridged, or, you know, or, or anything. So, how, if that was my understanding of what the law was, how can we just do this, like, well, whatever we want to make the hybrid to be, or, was that spoken to?
They didn't address it, but a tremendous amount of notification has gone out about looking for, and we have teachers in the audience who will be volunteering for those committees to actually sit down and have teams of administrators and teachers and disciplines across the state recreate. So, I don't know the exact answer to your question, but I'm going to find it out, because it's re, it's, it's important, and it's really what's going to drive the system.
And it's good to know that we won't be losing the fu, like, the additional funding you get, so, okay.
But I'll find out the answer of a-
Okay, thanks.
Exact answer.
Okay, I think we can move on to the next agenda item. Unless there's anything else, yeah?
Very, very briefly, we could go right around the room, each of you have been at a different event, briefly on this happenings. As I said to the high school principal today, I don't think there was a Milton High School student who wasn't involved in some activity this past weekend. First, huge round of applause to Milton High School girls cross-country team, MIA, division two, all-state champions, the first time since eighteen ninety-eight. Yeah. Now, we could stay here till eleven o'clock tonight, and I could give you the names and the classifications, the years of every one of the students, but I will publish all those names, and if I might, write letters to all of these students, and have school committee members co-sign the letters with their own little individual notes. There was a football game last Saturday night. Mr. Zulus, Mr. Walker, do you want to tell us, Ms. Bagley-Jones?
My comment would be, best way to describe it is, it was the best season in fifty-two years, so. That kind of says it all, but, it was a great game, it was well-played, and a few questionable ref calls, but, can't complain about that now. But, it, it was a great game, they, they, they were in it till the end, and, and I really thought we had it, but, at some point, but they had it, they had a running back that was pretty tough, I got to admit. And we, we kept him bottled up most of the game, even though we almost always knew the ball was going to him, but, at the very end there, he broke through. So, I don't know whether I'm rooting for them to win or lose in Gillette Stadium.
If I can add to that, what I heard, because I'm, you know, football, but anyway, the parents around me, and they weren't parents I necessarily knew, talked about how the coach had everybody suit up, even if they weren't going to play, that the kids really have gotten so much out of the season, that the parents have a very high approval rating of the coach. That's not always necessarily true in a game like this, if your kids don't get to play. It was very amazing how cohesive the parents around me seemed to be about the team and the coach. It was really nice to see.
So, I couldn't have done a better job. We should just pass these out, and Coach Dombrowski and Tom Shaw deserve a tremendous amount of credit. The poignant piece for me today, as we walk the halls of Milton High School, we all know, and you're, you put yourself out there, school committee members, it's all about those teachers and coaches. And those are two gifted coaches, and those two individuals. So, to follow up, the game for Braintree is on, and I heard tell, two hundred and seventy-five students are downstairs at a homecoming dance, I want you all to stay here now. They're exiting the room, and tomorrow, there's a pep rally, and so, the word is resilient. They're very resilient, their principal's resilient, and they were resilient today, and it speaks to them.
Braintree game is home or away?
Excuse?
Home. Home, home.
I'm telling you, we're just going to give out the paper, and we're going to share this, they know more than I know. I want to recognize Milton High School Diversity Committee, last week, a follow-up to their fifty years later last year, woman up, and they brought to the stage at Milton High School, Joanne Jackson, a Milton, a parent of a Milton High School student, who is a leader in the city of Boston in business and fundraising, Dr. Elsie Travers Taveras, who is a head of Pediatrics at Children's Hospital, and Tracy West, a dean from Boston College Law School. And, their message was very powerful, very-
And?
Oh, and, they were very respectful, they asked their superintendent to also be on the panel. And, we had an unbelievable moderator, Ms. Horan, Milton High School student, it was a very, it, it matched last year's presentation, and we got, we've received unbelievable feedback from the students. And it's the kind of night, like fifty years later, then a month from now, you'll remember something, six months from now, you'll remember a message, so it was a phenomenal night. And Larry Jordan and Milton High School Diversity Group, I said, the young boys and the young girls group, that Larry Jordan has created at Milton High School, a combination of fifty students, has actually had an impact on all one thousand students at Milton High School. Unbelievable.
And captured on video this time?
Yes, I believe it was.
Great.
I, I just want to echo, I went, I, I just still am talking about it, so I'm just going to tell you, it was, it was amazing. Kristin spoke, Mary was on the panel, Mike spoke via, via a student due to his laryngitis, and, but the student did a great job expressing, you know, Mike's story, and it was just, it was a really great night, and, you know, my daughter invited me to go to it, I was planning on going anyway, and there were some of her friends there, and just hearing them talk about it and the impact it made on them and the chit-chat, it just was such a great, great night. So, I was really proud to just be such a part of the Milton community, but I was proud of all of you, and it was just great, wonderful, wonderful night, yeah.
It, you know what I was proud of, that they asked Kristin Bagley-Jones and Mike Zulus to speak, Kristin spoke, I didn't know you were, were Women's Study major, but it was very, very poignant, and Larry Jordan really is training young leaders to follow through. So, it was phenomenal. I'm particularly proud of this next bullet, we have a PS school team who initiated their first competition at the Model UN Conference at Northeastern University this weekend. Two students won the best speaker awards, and another two students won the best negotiator awards. So, to Nancy Warren and the individuals who traveled with her, above, I heard tell they were exhausted, not as exhausted as the debate coach, who brought the Milton High School debate team this weekend. And, again, in my last, I'll list all of the students, they did very, very well, they're going to be coming to you a little secret, with a field trip request for a national competition. I'm going to leave that up to Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, she's negotiating with them, and Mary Kelly would be proud of us, and the fundraising, so everybody will be able to go. On December fifth, they're traveling to Lincoln Sudbury Regional High School. But, their pioneer coach, I spoke to him at five-thirty this morning on the phone, Nick Fitzgerald, he's checking in, giving tips about where the next competition should be. So, that's a culture at Milton High School. I had mentioned to you, and to our Milton Times reporter, that eleven hundred students filled the classrooms and hallways of Milton High School on Saturday. I should have, Ms. Verella, will you share?
They, well, my daughter was a part of it, as Ms. Shapiro's daughter was a part of it too, the, all the music kids were. So, Milton High School hosts, it's the Southeastern Districts every year, and so, it's a big, big music audition, it's the audition process to be part of the actual southeast performance. And, it's for strings, band, and vocals, and they, there's private and public schools from, I would say from Boston, all the way down to maybe Rhode Island. And, it went from eight to four, and the one thing that we do here, which I, I didn't know about, I was telling Ms. Bagley-Jones, is that they, the kids, the, the students at Milton High all auditioned, but they also worked the entire day, assigning classrooms, they were assistant to the coaches from the different schools, you know, being student leaders for the day, directing traffic, for lack of a better word, of where people go. And, but what we do here is, we set up blind auditions. So, a bunch of them on Friday afternoon set stuff up in the auditorium, and I said, well, what do you mean, it's blind auditions? I said, is it like The Voice, that there's like, you know, things that they turn around? But, they set up scrims, so that the students that come on, just like on The Voice, they totally just judge the music. So, you can't see what they look like, you just either hear the voice, or you hear the instrument. And, Dr. Braddatt says that the results have been quite interesting over the past couple of years, when all you're listening to is a violin, or the sax, or the vocals. And, you know, they, because it's very detailed about what they get, you know, judged on, but I thought that was very interesting, and the kids work really hard to set up the stage, so that everyone can move their equipment in and on, in and off, rather, and still have the, the, the blind audition experience of, of that. So, I thought that was a really interesting thing to share, so, all went well, it was a great day, and word on the street is everyone felt really well about their auditions from our students thus far, so, it was great.
School buses, I came in in the middle of the day, twenty students were lugging their instruments out, they all come with their own gifted instruments, so, it's an extraordinary experience, and sixteen students have been selected for the Eastern Senior Festival in January. Saturday morning, I think Ms. Bagley-Jones was at that event?
Yeah, the Best Buddies event, which was actually, the honorary chairman was Joni Jack-
Joni Jackson?
-son, Michael, who's a graduate of Milton High, and he was the honorary speaker of the Best Buddies. Milton High did not bring home the golden turkey this year, but they did two years in a row, and a local family team, Ed O'Brien, a young man who died at the age of fifty from a heart attack, his family, whose son was Alosha O'Brien, they raised, they were the second highest raising of the money. So, a lot of Milton High graduates were there, both of the program, as well as folks who had been the buddies. My daughter came back, a couple of college friends, very excited to be there.
Cunningham Colleague Team?
There was, there was a Cunningham Colleague Team, and the highest raisers was a middle school from another town, which was very impressive. But, it was a great event, it was a great event. I thought I might see Ms. Padera running, but she wasn't there.
I've had a little injury, and I don't, I don't want to run into the girls' cross-country team anymore, because, you know, it's a little embarrassing when all five of them beat you at this point.
Very poignant, as we finish, and we go towards the Thanksgiving holiday, that each of our schools have fundraisers, fun, food, food drives, and they share with the Milton Food Pantry. Today, I was at PS, and I asked what their drive was for, and they said, we wait until February, when the food pantry is down and really needs the food, need the food. And so, it was very, very poignant, the kinds of activities, and I, I, I'm not going to digress, I know you have a lot to do, but, I've told you that Mr. Rodman, in the name of his wife, sends us tickets through the Career to School Partnership for children to go to the theater, and his wife loved the theater. And so, I told Chairman Zulus the other day, he's written a book about giving, and he's written to me and asked if he might give the book to Milton High School students, and come and speak to students about the power of beginning to give when you're young. And so, he's going to give the book, and we're going to use it as a summer read, and then have units when students come back to school. But, today, it brought it home to me, that at the PS school, they had a flag football game last Friday afternoon, and there was a charge. And, with that money, the PS teachers and staff give those funds to an organization for families during the next month, who might need gifts or might need food. And so, I think that power of giving, when you're a kindergartner, and you bring in a can of vegetables, and you know it's going to somebody who might not have that on Thanksgiving, you're smiling, you might have known that experience, it's, it's very, very powerful. Reminding the public that tomorrow, there's no School Wednesday, tomorrow is a full day. After vacation, there will be on December first, a CPAC Parent Workshop in the Glover Library, our next school committee meeting is right away that Wednesday evening, and for parents and guardians also to circle on their calendar, and I'll tweet it out, I'll tweet the, I'll tweet it out on December second, the Milton High School is having a MIFA presentation on fundraising, if, for those parents and guardians to work with their children on the college process. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent, oh, Ms. Padera.
I just wanted to add one thing, Superintendent Gormly, because you mentioned the Braintree football game, but I believe the girls' cross-country team also has another match coming up, not that people will be able to come see, but they are participating in the Nike Championship in New York. So, just for people, for their interest. And just about the football game, I would like to say that, you know, all of us have been to one this season, I think, but, those of us have gone to games in the past, there's a big difference in terms of the crowd capacity at these football games, which- which I'm very, very happy to see, and I hope it continues. I think people have gotten to the habit of not only going, but bringing their families. And their families kind of experience that, and it's fantastic. Whether you're, you know, having the incredible season that we had this year, or just a normal, ordinary season. It's brought a lot of excitement to the whole town. I've heard reports from people saying that they were home, not the game, but they could hear when we scored from, you know, a mile away. So I just hope it continues, because it was just such an exciting year, and I want to thank the football coach and the football team for bringing that, bringing the community together in that way. And we were joking, Mike Lynch had said, you know, people are requesting that we, we've been taping the football games, and requesting, is there a way we could make them live? Because right now, they're taped after the fact. And people were saying, well, wouldn't that hurt ticket sales? And I'm like, we can't fit anyone else in that stadium. So if people want to stay home and watch it at this point, especially as it gets colder, or they're, you know, older and it's hard for them, there's no seats left. It's standing room only at these games. And some of these people that hadn't been to a game couldn't believe it. I'm like, every game is standing room only, every game. So I just think that's a great thing, and hopefully we can, hopefully keep that going.
Well, I'm just going to close.
I would just add one thing to that, which is that, that, that's absolutely true, and it's even more apparent at the away games. Because Milton always has the biggest crowd. It's so, it makes me so proud of the town.
That's very astute about away, and I'm really going to close this. When we go to away games, especially in tournament play, the M I A A officials always say to me, lady, you travel with more students than anybody in the state. And I have to say about Becky Padera, in closing, Becky Padera comes from Wisconsin?
Yes.
And so when Becky Padera first got on the school committee, and we didn't have big audiences at the football games, she kept having us put flyers out to K twelve to encourage them. So the high school principal wants an appointment with Ms. Padera about how we're going to monitor all those elementary and middle school students now who have somewhere to go on Friday night. But it's developed a culture in the town, and a pride, and a pride in the football team and the high school.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the pep band and helping with the excitement of that. I mean, they've come a long way from a couple of years ago, starting to now. They're just, they are part of the show. I mean, a huge part of the show. So I'm, I couldn't be happier coming.
Can I ask, did Dartmouth have their band with them? Because most, we couldn't go because...
They did.
Didn't have their full band?
Because all the kids were here, all the kids were here with districts, so they couldn't go and play for them.
We'll have to rectify that next year.
Work that out.
All of those things, I think, the athletics and, and the arts, and the Forty Second Street, the show that went on, and the and the, the, all of the competitions that we have, and the interest that it drives, both in the school and the community. All of those things are great unifiers, I think, unifiers, I think not only for the school and for the community, and so there's, I think there is, there, there probably, there always has been a great spirit, but I think there seems to be a great momentum right now in a lot of these things, both in the athletics and the arts, and so hopefully we can, hopefully we can keep it up.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Moving on to item five, the Chair's Report. It's now time for the Superintendent's Follow-Up on the Superintendent's Mid-Cycle Evaluation Report. We introduced this at the last meeting. Just as a, as a recap, in August two thousand and twelve, this committee adopted the Massachusetts Model for Evaluation of the Superintendent. And under that model, there is a five, five-stage process for evaluation. The first is self-assessment, the second is analysis, goal-setting and plan development. The third is implementation of the plan. The fourth is mid-cycle goals review, and that's where we are, that's where we are tonight, the mid-cycle goals review, which precedes the summative evaluation at our, at the school committee meeting last March fourth. The school committee approved the superintendent's goal, excuse me, goals for a two-year cycle, with the mid-cycle review to occur this fall, and the final valuation to occur next fall. And so we are now charged with a mid-cycle review meeting. And just to recap what the purpose of this is, the superintendent and the school committee review and discuss the superintendent's progress report, which the superintendent handed out at the last meeting here, and the members have had now for almost approximately, a little less than two weeks. The purpose of this meeting, public meeting, is to share relevant feedback, to develop a clear understanding of the progress being made on each goal, and to achieve agreement on what, if any, mid-course adjustments may, may, excuse me, may be needed. And so with that, I ask the superintendent just to frame the report that she provided the school committee with two weeks ago, and then that will open us up for our discussion and sharing of feedback and on the, on the progress that, progress that's been made. So Ms. Gormly.
Thank you, Chairman Zulis. In the spirit of self-evaluation, the accomplishment around goals is one, that the advancement initiatives are understood by our staff, K through twelve. And so when we started the advancement initiatives and educating our teachers, building ownership, understanding that these are the initiatives that are driving the system, I think testimony that when we have presentations from schools, parents and teachers alike understand the advancement initiatives. And in addition to that, I think evidenced by the reports coming in from the principals, that they understand what my goals are, and they understand what the school committee's goals are. And so they're communicated, their initiatives that we talk about at every leadership team. I've decided in these green folders going forward to start to share with you our agendas from our leadership meetings, and our diversity meetings, and our achievement meetings, so that you see that the district owns these goals, and they're part of their vocabulary, and it, what is driving them. So for the public, what happens, there's a student learning goal, and I worked with Mr. Walker, and Ms. Miller must be thinking of us tonight, and we came up with a very aggressive chart that now has been replicated by every principal to really see clearly what the goal is in each of the areas and each of the subgroups, so that we can evaluate the progress that we're making on these advancement initiatives. And then there are three district-wide goals, and then a professional practice goal. And so what I provided to the school committee was, I was going to give you a one, one-pager. And then, again, a tremendous amount of work was done by the principals and the department heads, working together, again, to communicate to the school committee, these are my goals, but my goals have to become the goals of the administrators, the principals, and the teachers in the classroom. And so that's what I've provided to the school committee. Is really a summary of the work that's been done in the district, and brief bullets on next steps towards our final presentation to you, my final presentation to you, of how we've achieved these goals. With, and again, for the school committee remembering that the other part, fifty percent of the evaluation, are the checklists on the standards that you'll be asked to evaluate me on.
So we can open it up for, for discussion. I'll just tell you, just to, as, at the outside, this, the purpose of this is to share relevant feedback between the committee and the superintendent. I don't read this to mean that there is any vote on this, unless the committee feels that there should be mid-course adjustments to the goal, to the goals. And so with that, I'll open it up for questions and discussion. Ms. Bagley Jones?
I'll say something. I think that what stands out to me about this is the incredible amount of data, Mary, that you have instituted in looking at a lot of things. I think it's really hard to have student learning goals, the superintendent's goals, and the school committee goals all in one, and you've really tried to pull a representative of all of those three things together, and I think that's incredibly difficult. So I appreciate you doing that. And the other thing that, as I read it earlier, and I read it again, and then I read through it again here, is I keep going through it, because like I said, there's so much data, but also you're setting really high goals and standards, which you should do, with really no resources to do a lot of the extra things that we're trying to do and that you're trying to do. So I want to put that out there about how difficult I think these things are anyway. And then to look at them and see the lack of resources is really telling that Mary's still willing to push the boulder up the hill, even though we don't have a lot of the resources that I think we have to accomplish these. So I think she's really to be commended for this. And I also think it's very ambitious, and I'm not surprised, but I think it's very, very ambitious.
Ms. Padera.
Just wondering, some of the, some of your goals were related to kind of test scores and things like that. How are we going to adjust those based on the fact that we're taking three different tests now, right? We've moved from MCAS to PAC now, and then a hybrid of PAC. It would seem that that would be something we need to look at, if that's based solely on those scores.
It's interesting you ask that. On the last page of what I gave you is really the grid that goes with the student learning. And so within the next month, everywhere from, again, Ms. Miller and Mr. Walker's and my conversation last year, to the data that will be given us from the state, I'll sit down with the subgroup of the school committee, if that's agreeable to all of you, and look at the kind of calibration they did. We've actually beginning to look at the raw data and looking at MCAS. I know we don't compare ourselves to the state, but we looked at the percentage points that we were at each grade level in each discipline in MCAS above the state. Then we said, where are we in PAC in those percentage points? But again, we have not received the calibration that they're going to give out. So if it was all right with the chairman, if a subcommittee wanted to meet with me and agree upon and discuss how really to adapt that chart for the student learning goal, and then present it to the full school committee before the end of December, mid-December, we'll have the data back.
At first blush, that, that seems to make good sense. I, 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 I don't think we have an existing committee that probably would, would be charged with doing that, so it would probably be, as you suggest, a, you know, new advisory subcommittee. So, so maybe we can come up with, by the next meeting, if it, you know, by the next meeting, we can come up with a view towards a, a charge for this advisory subcommittee and potential members. So, so why don't we plan, well, let's see, that's next Saturday. I mean, I'm sorry, next Wednesday. Is that Wednesday the second? Is that too aggressive, or shall we, no? All right, well, let's, let's, we'll try to come up with a charge by next Wednesday the second to present. So, so it'll have to go out to the school committee by Friday. Are people in the office Friday? Are people working Friday?
Miss Roach is planning to send out Monday morning.
Send out Monday morning for Wednesday. So is it, is it, is it reasonable for us to think that we could, what's tonight, Monday? So we, we think we can have a charge by, a proposed charge by, by when? This is something I'll need to work with you on. What's that?
I think Mr. Walker might know what I did.
Mr. Walker.
So I, this is something that we did spend a lot of time talking about, how to make this transition. So I, I would volunteer to help the superintendent draft the charge, and also express an interest in working on such a subgroup.
Okay, that'll be fine. That'll be fine. And then ultimately, just, just keep me in the loop, because ultimately I'll have to propose the charge to the committee, and, and think about how many members. At first blush, again, I, I think we should probably keep it a little bit confined. We don't want to get too unwieldy since we're making a subcommittee.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a, a very broad task. It's, it's actually very specific.
Yep.
How do we make the transition from MCAS to, to PAC? But as the superintendent has alluded to, Ms. Miller spent a considerable amount of time talking with them about that. They assured us that there would be a, a way to walk from one set of scores to the other. So if, if they have kept their word, there, there should be such a document that helps us make that transition. We'll see.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. So we'll plan to have, for the materials for the next meeting, a proposed charge, and perhaps proposed committee members as well, if any other school committee members are interested. Just, if you could just shoot me an email, just so I, just so I have it. Just shoot me an email. Okay, where were we?
I just asked that question.
Were you finished?
I was done.
You're done, okay.
That was the end of my question.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm doing the best I can tonight. Been better. Anybody else on the superintendent's, the superintendent's progress report? Mr. Walker?
So I would start with my feedback. My feedback is largely the same as it has been. So for the third year in a row, I know this is the mid-cycle and not the summative, but I, I don't believe there's anyone that can do this job as well as you're doing it right now. I, I continue to be impressed with, and this, this is a good exercise for us, because it reminds us about the broad scope of both challenges that we've set for you and for ourselves, and also all of the activities that are going on related to achieving those things. I would differ a little bit with member Bagley Jones as to resources. I don't, I don't think you're terribly under-resourced. I think that you can always, there are always places where we can do more, and we'll try our best. But I, I think you, not only do I think you have the tools that are necessary to achieve these goals, more importantly, as you, as you pointed out, I think we've got as good an example of, of what we call in the business world, horizontal and vertical alignment that, that I've ever seen. As any, any school that comes in and talks about their school improvement plan, anytime you talk to the principals, everybody understands what these goals are and why they're important, and are working towards them. I, I do have a few specific questions, because I did take the time to read this rather detailed document. So quickly. So this was under the, this is all the student learning, but under the Cunningham Colicott, I thought this was an interesting idea, was with the support of the curriculum coordinator, fourth and fifth grade schedules were modified to allow for flexible groups between grade levels. And I thought that was a very creative idea, and the question is, is that something that we could replicate or have replicated at other elementary schools? I think that's a really exciting, exciting idea about how to get at some of these areas. And, and that, the broader question that I have is, and I imagine it would be Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, but I, I think we have to continually be looking at best practices and research around the country. Because I think there, there are new ideas and, and new conclusions being developed all the time. So this isn't a, an instance where we think we have the answer and we just work toward it. It's something that we have to continue to look at. But the specific question is, is that something that has been replicated or could be?
Do you want to speak to that?
I don't believe it has been replicated at the other schools.
Is it feasible?
Yes, yes.
Great, well, I, I would encourage you to look at that. To my, to the point I just made, again, at the middle school, this designing for equity by thinking in and about mathematics, again, a really exciting idea. And then you mentioned the calculus project at the high school. Anything, any analog at the elementary level? That kind of research, which basically says, here are some new ideas about how to educate students in math?
Very, very interesting. We could call Ms. Shapiro while we're there. And for, again, the P S presentation, I would tell you that, looking at the PAC data, the Pierce Math Teachers and Dr. Life Legaris, and driven by this initiative and the professional development, their heads are shaking, the results in student data and for the subgroups. their heads are shaking. The results in student data and for the subgroups, and using the evaluation tool to actually recognize the subgroups and make those the goal, they're impacting achievement. And so at the elementary level, if you bring your eye to the next one, Educational Equity Professional Learning Network, thanks to Dr. Karen Spalding, we were chosen as one of ten districts. And it's a K-12 team. We met for, and they wouldn't let us out, for twelve hours an initial day. And now we're going to go into a sharing day, and it's all about cultural competency and equity. And so we're zeroing in on how to really rotate all of our teachers through that professional development. So to your point, very targeted at the high school, targeted at the middle, but this really is the first experience, would you agree? At the elementary level. But the point's well taken about targeting the math and highlighting the math and the research from across the country.
Yeah, and again, I, the Design for Equity initiative really sounded exciting, so to the extent that they might be analogs at the elementary level, that would be great. And then, and finally, on participation, this is the district improvement goal, goal number one. We had some, we had a presentation from the former athletic director, Larry Rooney and James Jet, and they had a plan for increasing participation, which I thought was actually a good plan. Has that, has that been passed on to the current athletic director for action?
It has, and I think what you're, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but we have the data, are assuming to know what you're going to refer to. We have the data from last year. And so I wanted them to take the data from the winter season. So they're doing that now. So when I report out on the MCAS, on the PACC data, I'll bring that up so that we can take one-third of the year and see how it aligns to the end-of-the-year data about the involvement. But you can see the work that V. and James Jet and I did, highlighting for you the participation and in clubs and activities, aligning really with the percentage of the different subgroups within the district. And not jumping ahead, some progress in the French immersion, but it's really given us our charge for our kindergarten and first-grade information nights, and the work that we'll be doing in the next two or three months around recruiting for French immersion for next year. Again, identifying that we have to work with our students of color and low income, but we did increase, again, doubling from five to 10. There's still ways to go with children with special needs in the French immersion. But that's what all of these goals are really of value, because every principal has to sit down and it's an evaluation of the work that we're all doing.
Right, okay, great. And my final observation is on goal number three, which is the school marketing plans. And this may be, this may end up being a comment to readjust, but maybe not. As I read through the activities, which are impressive, it seemed, I, I think that our objective was to ultimately get the benefit of your knowledge and wisdom. That is to say that, that to bring your oversight to these marketing plans. What I see here looks like what the schools are doing, what the, what the principals and I assume PTOs are doing. But I didn't see anything that tied them all together, which was, I thought, one of our objectives in drafting this goal. Do you understand what I mean?
Yes. And to your point, when I bring the PACC data within the next two meetings, and get the winter season, I can give my own personal summary and evaluate the marketing and what I think, not from what the principal's reported in, how I think it's working and what's not working.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much.
Anything else, Dr. Donahue?
So, excuse me. My question is a, is a more general question. I would like to know if the superintendent feels as though there are any goals that require adjustment on our behalf, is, is there anything?
Good question.
That's an interesting question. The student, the student learning goal is all-encompassing. The participation, the participation, I think, is very, very valuable. And even when it's not a goal for me, it will still be a priority in the district. I think Mr. Walker was correct about the marketing, that it's more a perspective of what I'm doing. I'm going over these. And the one that I did have questions about was the professional practice goal, 100% of the teachers to be able to demonstrate proficiency in reading and understanding, implementing IEPs in the STEM curricula. So the STEM curricula is a very valuable, I feel like the night, the night that the three STEM leaders presented, they almost answered that question for you. They actually said to me, this was a valuable exercise. At my next report, they have put in, they have added in this data, the number of students who are actually being exposed to these STEM classes. I said, I'd like to develop a grid for you so that we watch the number increasing at every grade level. So it's, that's not the same number of students. The issue around the IEPs, I, I didn't add this, and I should have. Teachers sign at the beginning of school that they've read the IEPs of every student in their class, but does reading it mean that you're understanding and implementing it? So I think that this is a, a good exercise in that if I had to identify a goal that I'm still working on, how to really make it a smart goal and have, other than somebody's signature on the back of an IP, how can I assure myself that, in the district, and most importantly, the children and families, that they're being understood and implemented? So we're still working internally on how to guarantee 100% success with that goal. So I wouldn't say that there was a goal that wasn't important to the district and driving student achievement. That, that goal, I'm still working. If you had asked me, how are you going to gauge the success? I have to tell you internally, we're still working on that. But that, that for parents and guardians and children on IEPs, it's a priority. Does your teacher, does every one of your children's teachers understand your child's IP? Are they implementing the accommodations? So that's, that would be my reply to you. We're still, I'm still working on that one and how to gauge that that actually has been implemented.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
Can I just add to that? I would look forward, not now, but another time, hearing more about your thoughts on inclusion in terms of the way that the system is responding to parents' concerns about that? It sort of fits, follows along with that. I think that would be helpful. I would, I would like to hear more about that.
Did I answer your question, Dr. Donahue?
And let me suggest this. If you have, subsequent to this meeting, if based on what you're finding, you need to adjust, or you wanna come back to the committee and sug, and suggest an adjustment based on what you're finding, certainly you can do that at any time. So the question may have prompted you to think more about it, and if you think more about it, and you, you think it makes sense for clarification purpose to adjust it, I'm sure the committee would be happy to hear. Okay. I just have a couple of things, a couple of questions, and it's, it's more about the deliverables for the summative evaluation. And, and some of it, I think, was alluded to, certainly with one of the goals by, by Mr. Walker. First, on goal two of the district improvement goals, on page eight, where we talk about implementing a comprehensive plan, do we have in mind a deliverable? Is that actually gonna be a deliverable that, that the committee will receive before the summative evaluation next year? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Get part of it, Mike?
With page one.
I'm sorry, page eight, goal two, implement a comprehensive plan
Social, emotional.
for all students in grades K to 12 to educate, assess, and support the health, social, emotional well-being, excuse me, of life skill preparation beginning in January 2016.
So this is, this goal actually has the interest of local PTOs. Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, Sheehan presented to the Cunningham PTO Psych Council today on this very goal and has been working on it. Maybe not tonight, but along with Ms. Bagley Jones and Ms. Padare, perhaps at a future meeting, we could have an update from Ms. Sheehan on the progress on that goal.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, the only, the only thought is, is it an actual tangible deliverable?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And similarly, and I think Mr. Walker was alluding to this as well, on the marketing plans, do we, do we look to those to be plans based on what we're doing, or do we look at, do we look to those to be actual deliverables that we think that we're gonna get at some point? And I'd ask you just to think about that as well. And then, on the professional practice goal, I really have the same question that was, was raised by, by Kevin, which is, how do you, well, in some respects, how do you measure it? You know, and so do you have a sense on how you're gonna measure this, the idea that 100% of the teachers can demonstrate proficiencies in IEPs and STEM curricula? How are we gonna be able to, you know, demonstrate that? That's.
And as I brought up, when Mr. Walker stepped out, I said, that's the one that Dr. Donahue asked, which goal? Your question, Dr. Donahue, was causing me, or did I wanna, and so?
Adjust.
It's an excellent, both of them are priorities, but I, I can say that everyone signed an IEP, but are they reading and implementing it? So internally, we're talking about how, and this is the most important thing to parents and guardians, how to gauge that. So I'm still working internally on how to evaluate that every teacher knows the IEP and is implementing the IEP accommodations.
I saw Ms. Rell first.
So, so Mary, are you, are you speaking to the fact that that, that, I would say, if you wanna call it, like, the mainstream classroom teachers are maybe educated by the special education staff, so they full, 'cause they may not be certified to the levels that they are, so that they fully understand all the issues? And if they have, you know, queries or questions to the special ed team, like, that they can find on that?
Exactly. So if they're, if they're accommodations, modifications, and ed plans, that the regular ed teachers understand the special education, to Ms. Bagley Jones', Jones's point, moving to its full inclusion, that they understand that they're given time to work collaboratively with the special education teachers to make those modifications or accommodations. So again, that's work, that's, and remembering that we brought in the expert from Harvard on inclusion. So it set a tone for this school year. You know, we hear feedback from teachers and principals about the message. We had one special ed teacher who said to Principal Redden, I'd, I'd like to leave my office and move my desk in a regular ed classroom. I wanna work out of a regular ed classroom. So the, the movement is for the instruction and all of the supports to be done in the classroom.
Did you still have something, or are you?
I do. Just waiting to be recognized.
Yep, I still have.
And so two points. One on goal number two, and so as not to make that broader than it needs to be, I think that our understanding, at least initially, was that the deliverable, to your point, the deliverable was to be a K through 12 social, emotional curriculum. That was the one deliverable.
That's the curriculum.
Okay. And on the IEP goal, I, I have some ideas about how you might assess whether or not we've achieved that goal.
All right, when I sit down with you about the?
Yeah, we can talk about that offline.
Okay. Well, thank you Superintendent Gormly for, Superintendent Gormly for the extensive mid-cycle progress report. And also thank you to all of the administrators and educators who helped you compile all of the evidence as well, because it, it shows that there was a lot of work done throughout your administration. So that's, that's certainly been very helpful to us. Moving on, we move to the vice chair's report. I believe there was an event two weeks ago while we were laboring here in the school committee. Ms. Padare was cavorting down in Hyannis. So we'll have a report on that.
You know, the, what everybody always waits for, the report from the MASC annual meeting. So the, there was a report on PACC, which, you know, Superintendent Gormly talked extensively about, so I won't bore you on that. And it's been updated since then, and she's updated you on that. I will just say that when I go to this conference many times, and this time included, I feel that Milton is very much ahead of other school systems in our preparedness. One of the things that the, the DESI rep that was there was talking about was that any test that there, we're going to be taking eventually is gonna be an online test. And that, that's what we need to be prepared for, and the districts that don't have that technology should need to prepare for, not just for taking a test, but preparing our students for the future. And so I thought that, I thought it was, there were a lot of school districts that are concerned mostly about that, and we are ahead of that in many, many ways. So that was fantastic. Just a couple other brief reports on the conference. There was a lot of, a lot of the talks focused on the social, emotional learning. It's a big topic right now, and many of you probably got the, the announcement that Boston has now had, has Assistant Superintendent for Social, Emotional Learning, I believe it is. Just a small couple of things. One of the things, I did go to a talk just focused on that, and, you know, the talk is about, how do you define that? Because it's, it's kind of a trademark phrase right now, but what is it? And so there was a lot of words thrown around, like, you know, it's improvements in perception, connectedness and belonging, and what's the significance of students feeling a belonging, meaning, and enjoyment? And what, how do you, how do you improve that? Doesn't that improve performance? So, and there's different levels of that, right? There's, there are students that might need highly individualized interventions, they talked about. And then there's another level, which is might be supplemental supports to help those students. And then there's just the positive community part, which most, all students need. So there are some really great things happening in Newton and Somerville districts, and they did talk a lot about that. So if anyone would be interested, I don't know if the school committee's interested, we could probably invite those people to come give a talk about what they do, because that's some of the, one of our superintendent goals and one of the things we've been working on. And I think it would help to define what other people are doing and what, how you do improve your social, emotional learning, because it is a harder thing to divine. You can't, data on it isn't, isn't as easily accessible. So if anybody's interested in that, we could certainly schedule that. The most probably popular speaker of the conference was Professor Zhao, I think he's from University of Oregon. And so his big statement that I thought hit home with a lot of people, he had a lot of great ones, but "A good and personalized education follows the child, his or her passion, motivation, and strengths." He talked a lot about what we're doing to, like, for instance, you know, kindergarten readiness. We should be ready for everyone, you know. The, the student should be ready for kindergarten. It should be us catering, working our education to help every student succeed. And sometimes that's not just about test scores, but it's about making sure students have that motivation and passion, and we tailor that education around them. So he was very popular. He's written a couple of books, so if anybody's interested in reading more about what he's read, I can give you that list. But then, oh, and one last thing before I get to the really exciting resolutions. The national conference is coming up, and it's in Boston this year. So if anybody is dying to go to a conference and feels sad that you missed the exciting Cape Conference, I'm sure you've got that information. So the resolutions, there was great excitement on the floor. Just, you know, you thought the football game was exciting. This, some switcheroo's. The first resolution, high school starting times. I, that one passed. A few. The first resolution, high school starting times, I, that one passed, a few, a few did oppose it, just based on, you know, what would that mean for sports and activities? This was really, as a reminder, just a study on how, how we would go about making those changes, you know, statewide. So that did pass, very little problem.
Yes. Could you just say what our recommendation was?
Your recommendation was yes, and it did pass as well, okay? No problem. Resolution two, poverty in children, that your recommendation was, again, to support it, and it did pass, really no, no problems there. The third resolution, tying test scores to Chapter seventy funding, this was where things went crazy. So the Quincy School Committee called for an amendment to this resolution, which was a moratorium on all high-stakes standardized tests, and the resolution really, yes, really, I am not kidding. So just to be reminded, so you understand where this is coming from, this is an amendment to this resolution, and this resolution simply said, therefore be resolved that MASC has support legislation to ensure that individual student AMCAST and PARC assessment data in a given academic year is ascribed to the school and district that claims Massachusetts' Chapter seventy funding based on that student's October enrollment, provided that the student is enrolled in a Massachusetts school when the tests are administered. So, that was a little out of scope, and it was called for that, and that was, amendment was voted down, and this resolution did pass, and your recommend, I think the vote was five to one, I think Mr. Walker did have a tiny question there, but that, your question was actually asked?
What a surprise.
Yes, isn't that interesting? Probably told him to ask it, but anyway, so they did, they said that all this would be is, of course, they would look at, you know, different dates and things like that, but it did pass, but at the tail end of it, if you think that it was over then, no, someone stood up to ask if they could get a feel of the room by taking a vote on the feel of the room, whether people liked the amendment to this resolution, and they did indeed take a vote, and the vote was sixty-three, six forty-two in favor of the moratorium on high-stakes testing, so I thought I'd just share that with you.
So it was in favor of-
Of the moratorium on all high-stakes testing. That was the feel of the room.
Good.
Yes. So, resol, on the resolution four-
So it wasn't passed, it was just a feel of the room?
There's not, there was, there was a feel of the room vote.
Okay, all right.
I was confused too, but I said I-
Yeah. Hey, everybody in-
I'm not that interested.
Everybody in the room was confused, let me tell you.
Feel of the room that's in favor and not counted.
There were, there were four people, the, many people had stood up and wanted to know whether it was going to be in their minutes, it shouldn't be in their minutes, 'cause it's a feel of the room vote, which, who knows what that is? It gets crazy down at the Cape, I'm just telling you.
I would point out, that is an unscientific sampling of-
It absolutely is, but I reported it.
Thank you.
So-
Just for clarity there.
Yep, I'm telling you, you thought that-
Large error bars.
Resolution four, this one was, just to remind you, therefore be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislations that will design, implement, and fund a program that will provide a more sustainable and integral placement program for the state's homeless and McKenna, Vento students, a placement program. Oh, I lost that page. Anyway, so, this was, your recommendation was yes, and it did pass, very little, very little sentiment against, they just had a few questions about some of the problems that districts were facing right now, but they were all in favor of it. And then the resolution five, tax reform ballot question, which I know, we actually, we voted yes on this. No, I'm sorry, we voted no on this, that's right, that was just me. So therefore be resolved that the MASC explore ways to promote social and economic equity through a ballot initiative whose purpose may include a state constitutional amendment, tax reform, protection of the state's neatest residents of all ages, and seeks additional revenue only from tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest residents. Further, that the goal of such a ballot referendum would be to secure a stronger financial base to underwrite needed improvements in the infrastructure of the Commonwealth, as well as the educational, social, and economic well-being of its residents. So there was a talk at the beginning of the conference, Mr. Pavlicek would know, 'cause I, I didn't write down the name of the, the group, is it Raise Up, Raise Up Massachusetts or something like that? They're trying to get this ballot, so it would be a, they explained in depth the, what they were proposing, which would be an additional tax on anyone earning a million dollars or more, and this kind of would go along with that. This resolution you voted no on, one, I'm sorry, one to five, vote was one to five, and it did fail, fifty to sixty-two. So, some districts were just concerned of what that message would send, and there was a lot of talks about tax reform. The people really in support of it were saying that if we are going to suggest that we need more money for programs in our schools, and that we are really in dire need of these funds, that we also have to propose solutions to that problem, and so that was the argument for and against, which was kind of an interesting discussion. And then the last resolution, which was, therefore be resolved that MASC urged the Department of Early Education Care and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to end the mandate that districts implement TS Gold or any other externally developed kindergarten assessment. We did not support this resolution when talking with our student leaders, which I promised to do, and I did, we were, we were using TS Gold and finding it a, a good tool as of, as of right now, that might change in the near future, but we felt we weren't ready to support this. But it did pass, and it was passed pretty resoundantly, so there's a lot of people out there that don't really like that tool, so. And I believe that's about it, unless anybody has any questions, yeah?
I do. So, it sounds like the Quincy School Committee-
Yes.
-was very concerned about the high-stake testing. I was wondering, I was gonna ask you, did anybody talk about President Obama's recent comments about how much time is spent on high-stake testing? Did that come up at all?
Um, I don't remember anybody saying that President Obama's comments, for one, but that could have been said, there's, last year was the same, there are a lot of people that are against high-stakes testing, and people got very, very upset, and there were a couple people ruled out of order and told to sit down, because it got a little crazy, because, you know, they're, they're also about against the Common Core as well, so it's, it's kind of a blanket versus, we think there's, there are some people that say, you know, are saying, we, we think we're spending a little bit too much time on testing, and we're, we're valuing education based on testing, and that's a more broad discussion, versus there's a lot of people that, in, at the conference, that really don't value the Common Core assessments and don't value any type, type of testing right now at all, it's kind of just stop doing it, and that's it. But there's really no solution to how, where we would move forward, so there, there, it's a, it's, it's an interesting discussion, and there's definitely people from all different kinds of districts and having different issues, I think the technology piece is a very, a very complicated argument, because there are districts that are pretty rural, and they don't even have internet access right now. So, it's a struggle, and it's a struggle for how we're gonna determine, but they are, they did talk a lot about all the grants that are available to some poor districts for technology, and they can apply for it now, and there was some help for how to apply for those grants and things like that, but the argument on the assessments is, I think, here to stay for a little bit, especially now that we're moving to a completely different assessment, so we'll have to see how that goes.
Well, that's interesting, I was just, at one point, I was gonna ask Ms. Gormly, I would be curious if we were keeping a running total of what kinds of times we spend on our standardized, I don't mean for tonight, but that's something-
Principals and teachers could give you that total.
Right, they could probably tell us that right off the top of their head, but anyway, something I would be interested in hearing more about at a later time. Thank you.
It's a huge issue.
Oh, and just, I'm gonna give this eventually, but there was a foundation budget review commission, and I'm sure everybody's dying to get this final report, I did bring a couple extra back with me, and I can give it to Superintendent Gormly for copying for anyone that would like to read it in detail.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, let's move on to the finance subcommittee report.
So on our fiscal seventeen budget, we did get some important information based on conversations that our chair had with the town administrator. The expectation is that the selectmen will vote on a balanced budget sometime in mid-December. That will require that we vote on a, both a contingent and non-contingent budget at our December second meeting. That will include a discussion of what we see as key priorities, and a discussion of at least one reduction scenario, since we'll be talking about both budgets, but we will need to discuss those and vote those that night. I believe we now have a finance subcommittee meeting scheduled for the evening of the thirtieth, so I'd expect that we'd get the materials out on the first, but most of it won't be much of a surprise, we'll be working with Dr. Pavlicek, but we'll need to vote, vote both of those bottom line numbers.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
I just wanna say thank you to the finance subcommittee and the folks here on my left for trying to incorporate some other meeting time, so that more of us can weigh in on it, I do appreciate that, I think that took a lot of effort and coordination, and I do appreciate that.
Well, I think the, the thing that helped was that our chair found out we had more time than we thought we had, 'cause it looked like we were operating with a deadline tonight, but as it turns out, we have a little more time, a little more time now, more work to do, but that's okay. First quarter grants report, which you have right in front of you, I hope, so I move approval that, I move approval that we accept these grants as listed in the November fourth memo from Dr. Pavlicek to the school committee.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, and a discussion. All those in favor? Janice?
Approval of the vendor warrant. Dr. Pavlicek, date, amount?
The vendor warrant that you signed last week was number twenty-one, dated November nineteenth, and the amount was five hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Is that it?
That's it.
Move approval of vendor warrant number twenty-one, dated November nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, and the amount of five hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, I think it was a tie.
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain. Five zero one, Mr. Walker abstaining. I think that concludes the finance subcommittee report, on to the policy subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the first item on the policy subcommittee report is the weapons policy. My, my initial plan, which I mentioned to my colleagues on the subcommittee, was to defer the first reading of the weapons policy for a couple reasons. One, the, the chair had expressed some interest in making some revisions, which I hadn't received, and he also expressed some interest in having input of our, our chief of police. I, I did receive some of those revisions from the chair earlier today, and they, they are not substantive revisions, so I would, I would entertain moving ahead with the first reading, with the knowledge that this will then subsequently be put on the back burner, so to speak, for a couple of weeks, while we assimilate the input of the chair and the input of the, the chief of police, just, just so we can sort of move things along with regards to this, 'cause it has sort of been lingering for a little over a month now. So, all right. So, so you have in front of you two copies of the weapons policy, one is the old copy, one is the new copy, there has been a single edit in the first paragraph at the suggestion of council, and then as you move through the second and third pages, there are more, slightly more extensive edits with regards to the legal citations, but otherwise, the weapons policy is substantially unchanged from prior. So I would move that the school committee approve the weapons policy, policy J I C H in a first reading, as submitted amended before you.
Motion's been made and discussion, made and seconded, any, any discussion? Mr. Walker?
So I, I do expect that we'll, we'll have some feedback from the police department, so would you, would you rather vote this now and then incorporate that, is that your plan?
That's my plan, to incorporate that between now and the second reading, and, you know-
Okay, I'm good with that.
And I'll, oh, Ms. Padera.
I'm just confused, do we vote on a first reading?
We can, we can, I think it's fine, I don't know that it's, it's required, but we can certainly do it. And, and I'll just, the, the, the non-substantive changes that I, that I made, and, and will suggest, are just to use the definitions that are, that are set out, the definitions of possession and zero tolerance, excuse me, and weapon, in the text of the policy, those definitions aren't used, the words aren't capitalized, they're, the, the policy speaks about no tolerance, as opposed to using the defined term of zero tolerance, so it's really just a clarification, actually using the defined terms in the policy and the text of the policy, so it's nothing substantive in terms of the intent, it's just really clarification, so that when someone, when someone reads no tolerance, it'll say zero tolerance, and then they can go to the definition of what zero tolerance means under the policy, so it's, it's pretty simplistic stuff, it's, it's not, it's not really rocket science and not substantive. And then, and then, not sure what, if, if the chief will have, have much, he may, you know, he probably doesn't have much of anything else to do tonight, maybe he's working on it tonight, but, 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 yeah, so I, I think it, I think it does make sense to, 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 to take a look at, do the first read now and then do it later on. Mr. Walker?
So two things, I, I mentioned to, to the chief, to the deputy chief, and Jack Richmond, all that we would appreciate their feedback, so I, I think we will have some substantive feedback from them. I think Ms. Padera's point is important, I, I think it would be cleaner if we simply accept this for a first reading as submitted, 'cause if we vote, then we have to, somebody's gotta move to reconsider if we're, so.
Then I'll, then I'll withdraw the motion.
Yeah, we typically won't, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't vote on a first read, we'll do the first read for discussion, and then, and then we'd vote the policy after the second read, that's typically the process, so, okay. Any other questions or comments on?
All right. So moving along, the, the second topic is an update on some of the other policies that we've been working through in, in subcommittee. So we, we reevaluated our nondiscrimination policy and our nondiscrimination policy on the basis of gender policies, AC and ACA, specifically, specifically with regard to gender identity, which the state has included as a, as a subgroup that requires, I don't know if protection is the right term, but to be addressed in this setting, in, in or about two thousand and twelve, and the, the previous Milton School Committee iteration has, did include gender identity as a, as a group that we would specifically not discriminate against, not that I would imagine we would, but for the purpose of legal clarity. So that updated nondiscrimination policy was not in your printed binder, and now is in your printed binder, and had we had that at the time, I don't think we necessarily would have taken it up in subcommittee, but we did, and discovered that it was omitted in the binder. So in the course of having this discussion, we contacted council, and as, as some of you, depending on how, how deep you have gone into our policy binder, you may notice that we have this nondiscrimination policy that identifies several groups, several subgroups, to name a few, race, color, gender, gender identity, religion, national origin, et cetera. And then in addition to this nondiscrimination policy, policy AC, we have specific- And then in addition to this nondiscrimination policy, policy A.C., we have specific nondiscrimination policies, including nondiscrimination on the basis of gender, which would seem to be encompassed under policy A.C., but it is a legal requirement that we have a separate nondiscrimination policy that speaks directly to gender. So it was the opinion of council that we did not need another specific sub-nondiscrimination policy that specifically addressed gender identity. So that speaks to some of that work that we have been doing on those topics, and I know that has sort of made its way to some of you or many of you through the various emails that have gone back and forth, but for the purpose of informing the town in general, I thought I'd bring it up here in open session. And I don't know if anybody else has any comments regarding that.
Mr. Walker.
Just a legal question, maybe for Dr. Donahue or for the chair. Given the language in the second to last paragraph in A.C., doesn't that make Mass Journal Laws, Chapter 151B, one of the legal references? Or is that language different than in 151B? 151B is the statute that covers discrimination for the state.
It's a good question on whether we should have the reference.
Yeah, that's the question.
It looks like, I mean, I don't have it committed to memory, it looks like the same language.
Yeah, it does.
But if it is, then we should have it, we probably should have the reference.
We'll circle back to council and get their opinion on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, Kevin, and this might be, this might already be covered in the nondiscrimination policy, should the, it occurred to me whether the nondiscrimination on the basis of gender, whether that should include a reference to gender identity. And perhaps it doesn't need to, and perhaps you've thought about it or considered it with council.
Right. So that's, thank you for bringing up that, that's why A.C.A. was discussed in the context of A.C. and the context of gender identity. And the answer I got from council was that A.C.A., nondiscrimination on the basis of gender, that policy is tied in with federal Title IX in that policy. So by bringing in the state's nondiscrimination policy with regard to gender identity, which is, it is not mirrored on the federal level, that would change the policy as it relates to Title IX, which was part of our initial conversation with council, whether we need a separate policy or whether it could be incorporated within A.C.A. And their opinion was neither, as long as it's in A.C.
Then it's covered.
Then it's covered.
Great.
All right. And then last but not least, our diversity policy, policy I.F.C., we will be taking that up in subcommittee again, so any input is welcome and encouraged. And that concludes the policy subcommittee report.
So Kevin, on nondiscrimination, so we're going to hear back on 151?
Yes, yeah. I will circle back in policy A.C. with regards to reference to the...
So we'll put, for the next time we have policy subcommittee, we'll have weapons, we'll have nondiscrimination, and I don't know that we need nondiscrimination on the basis of gender if we're going to vote to revote that, or no, we don't need to. And then diversity, if we, we'll put that on. So we'll include weapons, nondiscrimination, and then diversity?
And we may have student activities.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a topic that generated some discussion in our last meeting, and that is the school committee meeting location. We are tonight in the Milton Access TV studio, room 245 in Milton High School. I think we have the Milton Access TV executive director, Mr. Lynch, I believe is here, to tell us about this location and perhaps this location compared to the library location, and then any questions that any of the members might have. So we turn it over to Mike Lynch, the Milton Access TV executive director. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. I can start by welcoming you to the new studio we have at the high school. I can say it's finally done and completed. I'd like to just talk to you tonight about some of the features and benefits of our studio here that we might not get to another room, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. So first thing, we are filming you guys in high-definition, which is a huge plus over the library. We're not broadcasting in high-def, so not to worry about the makeup just yet, but eventually we will be getting into high-def. As you can see, one of the advantages coming down here is everyone has their own microphone, and we don't have to share, so that makes the audio a lot better. If you look around the room, something that's different, we have three cameras now instead of two, so we can capture more of the committee at different angles. We gave you guys a built-in projector in the ceiling. It's a bulbless projector, so it does not need to be replaced for a number of years. So that's a plus, and you can actually, I know we have no PowerPoint presentations tonight, but you can see on the wall behind me, we're projecting up the town seal. You don't need to turn the lights off in the room, it can be seen, and I think from any angle in the room, a PowerPoint presentation can be seen. We can get into the control room, which you guys can't see from this point, but it's kind of nice that the crew is now tucked away and not in the actual meeting. In the control room, we can take up to eight camera inputs. We've got a direct input from the projector now, so when residents are at home, they can actually read the presentation, it comes across a lot clearer. We can tape Skype interviews if there was a member who wanted to participate, remote participation. We can now do Skype right from the studio. And overall, it's just a, it's a huge improvement over the library. So I can answer any questions you might have about the room we're in, any of the features, benefits, anything.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
It's a great, what you just described is absolutely wonderful, and it's so appreciated, all that, you know, you've done, and I'm sure that there's thousands of people at home watching us and very glad that we're going to have high definition. No, but seriously, from one who used to watch school committee meetings with my, you know, ear against the TV, you know, literally I did that, I don't know why, but, so I do appreciate that. But, anyway, there are things that I miss about upstairs, so we agreed we would try it tonight, and I just feel badly saying I miss the library, but I do.
That's okay. And it's a full studio, so we're actually, we're hopeful that the school committee will use it when they can. We're actually now, we started a show out of here. We film a show every Thursday morning called Stepping Up to the Plate. It's with the Boston Globe reporter, Mike Bigg, and he highlights the high school sports. So our first show debuted, we had the entire marching band in here, the entire cheerleading squad, and all the captains for the football team, the coach and the athletic director. So that was a really exciting show. So we're getting to use it a lot more. We are working with the administration and we're working with the teacher to develop curriculum for next semester. We're starting to bring his classes in now to get the kids, you know, familiar with the equipment, so it's being used, it's a great, you know, it is a TV studio, so it'll be used, so we're happy. Any other questions?
Ms. Rowan.
Yeah, I mean, all of your efforts, it's beautiful and all of the benefits of it. This is, might be nitpicky, but I think I did ask about it when the studio was presented to us earlier in the season about soundproofing, and just from being here tonight earlier, when percussion classes were going on next door, I mean, there's not many people here tonight, but if it was a citizen's speak or a serious subject or whatever, is there anything that can be done about that, that you don't hear the pounding of the, I mean, the drums in the background, it's a little distracting?
We were talking about it, and we actually had a meeting with Bill Ritchie, the director of Consolidated Facilities, and we heard the band playing, so we're putting up more soundproofing. We're also working to partner with the school to make sure, you know, if there's a school committee meeting that night, we might be able to move the band or the practice out of the band room. And the final thing that we are working on now is putting carpet in the room to reduce some of the noise. It's just, we have to, it's fire-eatered carpet, and we have to just be, plan that out, but that would help with the sound. Yes, I've heard the drums, especially in the morning.
Mike, can you describe, you know, the dollars that went into this and who paid for what went into this and who decided to pay for this?
Sure. So the studio itself, the equipment was $180,000. We then went ahead with the studio, we matched it with a MacLab, which was an additional $40,000, no, $30,000, so it comes out to $210,000. That was funded through MPeG, the company that I work for. There's no taxpayer dollars, it comes directly from the Comcast revenue in the town. The reason that we thought about putting a studio in here, and just to give a little history, this room was always meant to be a studio. It was meant to be a black box theater. It's actually the old stage of the Pierce, that's why the ceilings are so high and it's such a big room. So that was one reason. Number two, the school committee really needs an upgrade to their system. We had talked about, and with previous administration, looked at building out rooms in the library, building out the corner in the library, and it just, it didn't work. We had the plans drawn up. One of the big concerns is that we'd have to put cameras in the ceiling, or at least high up on the poles, and we were worried that children might be able to get up there and reach them and pull them down, so that was a concern. But we just looked at the room, we looked at the space, we thought this would be a great way to, you know, put a studio up at the high school, develop curriculum, get kids involved, and really mirror what we do at Pierce, because that's what I do after school, you know, once we get the kids there. So that was the big push, to put a studio in here, and then we thought, hey, school committee meets here, they meet in the same building, maybe they'll want to come downstairs and be in our new studio.
Ms. Bedera.
And Mike, now you talked a little bit about the problems in the library. What would need to be replaced in the library to make it, like, because there are some things that are, would need to be replaced, from what I understand.
One difference, if you see from tonight, I'm not pushing my little cart out with all our equipment on it, and the equipment is failing, it's about five years old now, it's kind of in peace together, and it was, it's always been on our priority list to switch out the equipment in the library and to upgrade it. Some of our other locations needed that attention first, so we were, you know, the school committee library, it did work. As the years go on, though, it's just the equipment is getting older and it needs to be upgraded. So, you know, a simple, maybe ballpark figure is, would probably need about 50 grand to put up there. But again, it's, with this room, we didn't have to worry about construction or putting walls up or breaking walls down. In the library, to make it ideal and to make it, you know, to improve the sound for people to hear, we really shouldn't close that area. And that's where I think it gets rather complicated, to try and block off your corner. So that's why we talked about this part.
Thanks, Mike.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
So if we were, to follow up on Ms. Bedera's question, how long is the equipment that's up there? You're saying it would be $50,000?
I mean, it's one thing that needs to be replaced, I'd have to talk to my board, I don't know if we'd be ready to replace it this year with the money we spend on this room. I can't give you a definite date if it's going to just stop working one day. Part of my job is that I'm just, you know, we walk into a room and we can figure out the problem, we can try and do it quickly and make sure the meeting goes online, but there are problems that usually happen every meeting, that just, I don't, can't predict them, and they really can't be avoided. So, you know, it could continue on just as it is now, and we can, you know, continue to try and improve the room and see what we can come up with.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Good, thank you.
Let me ask you, Mike, if you know the answer to it, did your board approve the funding and the fit out of this room with the expectation or the hope that the school committee would meet here?
The board did approve it, we approved it as a TV studio, and then, like I said, the reason we really started it was to get the kids involved and so that we had a studio here. And we've been trying to get kids to come to Pierce, but it's just, it's a little difficult, so we thought, let's come here. And it was my recommendation to the board to say, hey, if we're going to put this money in, why don't we reach out to the school committee? Why don't we look at their, you know, their setup now and see what we can do to incorporate into that room? We didn't have to, well, we did add more features to this room with the hopes that school committee would be down here, but it, so it's equipped as another meeting room. But the board was just hopeful that we would work together to figure out some type of partnership and agreement to utilize this room more.
And I'm sure that that would, that would be a good thing to do, but we were clear when we accepted the gift that there weren't any strings attached, that we discussed, so...
Correct, yep.
Okay, well, thank you, Mike. I mean, you're welcome to sit here as we discuss in case any questions arise, I guess, so. So we can decide where we want to meet the next time, or we want, we can decide where we want to meet for the foreseeable future, it seems to me. Either one of those, we can just do it as the next meeting, or as the next meetings until we decide differently, so the floor is open. Any thoughts?
Well...
Ms. Bedera.
I would just say that I think the, as we sit here and look at the large audience we have in attendance, they can hear us very well, but most of our audience is at home. I think the improvements, which is, you know, I forgot, it's over 200,000, maybe under 300,000 improvements for sound quality and picture quality and presentation quality. And we have to think of the people that are sitting at home, most of the people that watch our meetings are sitting at home or watching it later, and it'll be easier for them to watch, it'll be easier for them to see presentations. I see no reason why we wouldn't meet here. I think that, Mike is being very nice, but I sit on that board too, and I think the expectation of the board is that we would use this as our, as our meeting space, at least on a regular basis. And I, I just, I guess I would, I see no reason why we wouldn't use it, if it makes it a better presentation for those people that are watching at home and later. It's a nice space, and it's professionally done, I mean, it's a vast improvement from the library, so, yep.
And the other thing, too, with the video, video quality and audio quality drastically improving from this room, I could show a comparison of the meetings we have in the library versus the first meeting you've had here, and it's night and day, it really is. So I know, presentation-wise, I'm not going to say please move here for, just for your presentations, but to see your hard work on an angled camera with half the lights off, fuzzy, as opposed to now with the dead-on clear shot, that alone makes a huge difference for the viewers at home, and that's been one of the, one of the biggest complaints we get. Now, we could try and improve that in the library, can try and work some magic, but...
Any other thoughts? Mr. Walker.
So I was on record as being very fond of the library, and in the interim, I got a call from Bernie Lynch, who I would do anything for. So Bernie, if you're watching, I am going to vote in favor of moving. I've got a couple of questions about acoustics that I'll talk to Mike about offline, and I think rugs would help, so, and maybe some of those soundproofing panels, the acoustics seem a little tinny right now. And I'll push for more comfortable chairs, but I'm willing to do it.
We are hopeful that, you know, like I said, it's a partnership, I mean, the studio is complete, you know, in theory, it's, my equipment is in, it does what we need it to do. We perform, we were here all day doing signal tests and audio tests, and I just don't have nine people on my staff that can sit here and talk all at the same time, so I know that acoustics are an issue. I hear them in the room myself tonight, but it's something that we can work on and we can, you know, have something for the next meeting.
Yeah, I, as long as you work on the acoustics so that we don't hear the banging of the percussions and the drums and all that, because it is distracting, especially, I really do feel that, especially with some of the... I really do feel that, especially with some of the discussions that do come up at a school committee meeting. So as long as you're gonna forge ahead to improve those, I mean, I'm okay with being here, you know.
Mr. Walker.
Just one more point on that. I, I think we should work hard to solve the acoustics problems. I don't wanna displace any students, any music students, or to have some auditorium on whether they can have practice while we're meeting. I don't wanna do that.
But, but, but here's my, but here's my thing, that's what I, that was a concern, that's why I asked about it, 'cause I know all the music rooms about this, and I'm, I echo Mr. Walker, we have an unbelievable program here and music lessons going on twenty-four seven, really. So I agree, I don't want to, I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring that up to Dr. Burdette either, or Mr. Good or Mr. Data.
I think actually, I think Dr. Pavlicek has some input on this.
We did do some investigating on this. One of the things we're looking at is on nights when, for instance, jazz bands or when the bands is practicing, we're looking at moving them over to the stage for the practice for that night across the hall in the auditorium, to keep, so it doesn't, they're not on the other side of this wall. And I have met with Mr. Ritchie about the number of panels that we'll need to, to put some more soundproofing in here, and the rug. The issue with the rug is, as Mike mentioned, it's gotta be a fire-rated rug, and it's gonna take a little lead time to get in here and so forth, because you can't put down just a plain rug in any of these spaces. So there's, there's a little bit of a work that needs to be done, but we're looking around to see if we have, first off, some more of the panels, but they're not terribly expensive, and we'll try to get a few more in here and get the sound deadened a bit. But between getting those walls deadened and a little deadening on the floor here, I think it should be a substantial difference. We'll have to, we'll have to work on the drums.
What do you think the lead time is on the rugs?
I'd have to talk to Bill. It depends on the size. Really large rug can be a month or more, you know, we just have to see. We've, we've done it in some classrooms where we had, for students who had acoustical issues, we've managed to insulate some classrooms for sound. The, the sound blocks to the walls are pretty fast to get in, and we've managed to turn around a rug when we needed to pretty quickly. Sometimes we do it in, with squares as opposed to a large rug. We'll have to, we'll have to investigate, what's the fastest way to get something in here?
Let me ask Mike, Mike, if the, if the musical rooms were needed on a particular night by the jazz band or any of the other performing groups, could we go back upstairs? I mean, in other words, as has been indicated by both Leroy and Sheila, the first priority should be the bands, and we should be the second priority, so that if there, if there comes a night where that's needed by the bands, could we be kicked back upstairs without too much difficulty?
Right, and if, and if I could just clarify, I apologize, I misspoke. I was dealing more with the music and acoustical problems during the day, 'cause it was, just working with the teacher, it would be like an easy fix to move a classroom. I would never wanna hinder the music program. I was part of it when I was in high school, it was very, very, very important to me, so. But the, you have three locations now that you can go live from in this building, this room, the auditorium, and the library.
Okay.
So in the event that we had to, we could.
Okay.
Yeah. But...
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I was just gonna say that part of my concern was when we accepted this grant and all the great work that you guys have done, it was really exciting about the student learning taking place. To me, that was the priority for this room versus where we were. I frankly didn't even realize that we would be expected to move. One of the things I really like about the library, and Ms. Padare's point is well taken about the viewing public, but as a school committee member, it's wonderful for me to be in an environment where there's evidence of students and a reminder for what we, why I do what I do. I like the music sounds, wouldn't bother me at all. I'd like some artwork up here. I'd like to see evidence for us sitting on the committee of who the kids are and why we're here doing what we do. To me, this is a student lab, this is great and very much appreciated. The library is the jewel of the system, in my opinion, and I think it's really good for the school committee to be up in the library showing that. On the other hand, you know, there are, is the viewing public, and, you know, I understand that, but to me, I would like to see Ms. Gormly take on another task of getting the art teachers and the music teachers and make this place come a little alive, no offense, come a little alive for being about students. So that's just my bias, I'll be willing to follow what others are saying, but I just, I'd like it to be more student-friendly, community-friendly, if we're gonna be here every time. Maybe some fake windows.
And I, I hate to belittle the music, and I respectfully disagree with my colleague, 'cause the music does bother me, even though I love it, but not, not for this kinda thing. Again, as far as I know, there, there's lessons here every night, pretty much, across the board, so it's just a concern that I think you have to improve the room, because I don't, again, want anybody kicked out. It's not like jazz bands here every once in a while, or, you know, it's across the board, K-12, twenty-four seven, so that's just an issue I feel strongly about.
Dr. Donahue.
So my, my contribution to this.
Well, there's a flaw.
Maybe I won't speak. I was just gonna comment on the fact that the, the selectmen have several options for where they hold their meetings, and they seem to avail themselves of all of them, depending on the circumstances, whether it be a town hall or the Council on Aging. So I don't see a reason that we couldn't, for example, take advantage of some of the natural light in the library at times of the year when there is natural light to be had during the times of our meetings. But this is a tremendous space, a tremendous, tremendous workspace, and thank you for your time and the money that has gone into, into creating this. Yeah.
So, do we need a motion or a vote to do this, or do we just wanna say we'll meet next time at this room? I'm open to either option, if, if, I don't think a vote is necessary, but, but we can certainly have one if the members wish.
I think Mr. Lynch would be happy if I moved that we designate this as our primary meeting space.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? And abstentions? Five zero one with Ms. Bagley-Jones abstaining. Okay, thank you, Mike. Moving on to the approval of minutes, we have the minutes from September thirtieth and October seventh that had been provided previously before the last meeting, before the last meeting, I believe. So, do we have a motion on the, so I'll move to approve the minutes of the meeting on September thirty, two thousand, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and again in a tie. Any discussion? All those in favor? I didn't quite, can we just keep them up just for now? Sorry. All those in favor? All those opposed? And abstentions? Five zero one with Mr. Walker abstaining. Minutes for October seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Any, any comments on those? I'll move approval of the minutes dated October seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? And abstentions? Five zero one with Mr. Walker abstaining. All right. Let me get back to my agenda, which I, here it is. Old Business Citizen Speak topic response, we don't have anything. Next meeting agenda items.
I think for the...
Mr. Walker.
Second meeting in December, I'd like to have the facilities subcommittee report on the agenda.
I believe that's the eighteenth, I think it's the eighteenth, they're there about, so that'll be, okay?
And I think December...
Sixteenth.
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 December second, is that the next meeting date?
Yes, Krista.
That's health and wellness, I think, is on there, or should be on there.
December second. Okay?
Forty seventeen budget on the, will be on the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, was it, did they fairly, hopefully fairly, open agenda otherwise?
Yeah, I believe we do. And so I, I think the two primary items on that agenda will be budget and health and wellness. I don't think we... Oh, Ms. Rell.
No, no, I just wanna echo that I think we, we should not make it a heavy agenda due to the fact that we've gotta discuss budget, yeah.
Yep, that's the intention.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I think we'll probably defer any policy until the next meeting, and I don't think we have, you know, absent something coming up in the interim, it'll be, it'll really be budget, and then we'll have, excuse me, then we'll have health and wellness as well. I think we can do both of those. I don't think, I don't think that's too, I don't think that's too aggressive. We're all getting it now.
Maybe, wait a minute, maybe it's the sick one.
I think we need health and wellness.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Can I ask that we put health and wellness first and we can make it very brief?
Sure.
As compared to at eleven-thirty at night when we finish the budget?
Yeah, absolutely, so we'll put health and wellness.
Thank you. We'll make it brief.
Yep. All right. Hope I put health and wellness first, all right. Anything else on next meeting agenda items? Citizen speak, we don't have anything. Now I'm gonna move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussion, negotiating, discussing negotiation strategy with MEA, and ask me the discussion of which in open session could be detrimental to the position in the, in the negotiations for the school district and for the approval of minutes. It's a roll call vote, Ms. Varella? Oh, actually, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and Ms. Varella?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish Yes, Ms. Padare?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Thank you very much, we will, actually, let me just add to that motion and that we not to, not to, not to return to open session, and I won't ask you all to, to indicate again, I think it's sufficient. So we won't be returning to open session, I apologize for forgetting that, and I'll hope to do better in, in executive session than I did here in open session this evening. We are adjourned until December second, again, here at room two forty-five at the Milton High School. We'll see you then, thank you.